Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Members present: Emmanuel Dascalakis, Mike King, Mike Baptiste, Associate Member Richard Swenson, Town Council, Richard Bowen, and myself, serving as Chair, George Barrett. If anyone's recording this evening, would they make it known?
For the record, Attorney Sheila Tierney. I have a court reporter on behalf of my client, Cedar Village, Inc.
Thank you. First order of business is the meeting minutes of September 9th. You had a chance to review another kind of lengthy... If you'd like, we can put up the minutes till the end of the meeting, or if you're ready to...
Ready.
September 9th. If everyone's ready, would you care to make a motion?
I move that the minutes of September 9th be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item of business is a approval not required. MAP 90, Lot 1035, Cedar Village, Inc. Oh, I skipped over the first one there. Need to set a public hearing date for the proposed subdivision for David Mather on Oak Street. The date suggested is Monday, October 7th.
21st.
Oh, you've seen it? I'll get it right. We'll have time.
Yeah, we need to have time.
Okay, October 21st. Would you care to make a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion to set the public hearing date for definitive subdivision plan for October 21st at 7 o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion was made by Mike King, seconded by Mike Baptiste, correct? Next, we have the approval not required plan for MAP 90. Lot 1035, Cedar Village, Inc., 7 and 9 Old Stagecoach Road. For the record, you did receive a letter from the fire chief. Assuming we got a copy.
No, I haven't seen it.
To Wareham Planning Board, on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, Planning Board Member George Barrett requested a letter of determination from the Wareham Fire Department regarding Old Stagecoach Road and if there was appropriate access for fire department apparatus. It is the Wareham Fire Department's determination that Old Stagecoach Road in its current condition, that there is adequate access for one of our emergency vehicles. The Wareham Fire Department can provide emergency services for the current and future residents unimpeded. Especially submitted, Matthew Rowley, Chief.
Does it sign a little copy? Maybe... Anyway, since last we met, there was a site visit by some... Along with council, have we any means of any report on that visit? You care to share?
You want to go first?
We spent roughly half hour, 40 minutes there. Looked over and walked the road. Everything looks suitable for traffic. Seems to be a reasonable construction. So, based on that, as far as the quality of the road and the access to the homes, I would have to agree with Chief Rowley that it seems to be suitable.
The...I guess the overwhelming question I have is, given the history, is there an easement attached to 1035 that gives them the right to cross the two other properties between them and Galt Road?
Which...I'm not clear what you're asking.
Is there an easement granted to Lot 1035 that gives them the right to access Galt Road from that?
You mean to go up Old Stagecoach Road and then onto Galt Road?
Across the Florindo, and you don't have the other property owner's name listed here. I don't know what it is.
It's Adam Johnson.
Yes, we talked about this the last time, that there was a grant of perpetual easement from Adam Johnson. And I indicated that it had been recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds back on May 29th.
Does the same exist for Lot 1039A?
This makes it on record for this one.
Well, that's an old lot, but the Florindo property, I guess we'll call it, is a current home.
Yes. And she's admitted to that, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have that paperwork with me.
Not that it matters if she admitted, or the miss of Florindo knows we have the right to pass and repass. And the easement that says that others have the right to pass and repass on that road. Same like us and same designs at the end.
It's my understanding that when that lot was created, it used Cranberry Highway for frontage.
Which lot are you talking about?
Florindo property.
So, 1039A?
Yeah.
Yes.
We don't know why he had to get frontage on Cranberry Highway.
I don't know if that's the case.
I have no idea.
There's a access right-of-way out to Cranberry Highway, but that's not the frontage.
Right.
Which you can't use that access right-of-way because it crosses a wetland and an intermittent stream.
And that right-of-way has since been... That piece of property's been purchased by the applicant.
Yes. But the right-of-way still exists.
Would council like to weigh in on what you've...you want to...
George, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Or make a comment? I also went to the site and saw a wide road paved. And it would be unreasonable to claim that vehicles cannot access whatever property they want using that road. As a member of the planning board and the authority given to us by the statute, I am unclear about certain aspects of this request. And I'm glad our council is here because I don't understand why this is not a subdivision. The authority granted to the board is to make certain that no subdivision is approved unless an definitive plan of such subdivision has been submitted to and approved by the planning board. And I've heard very different reasons why this is not or might not be a subdivision. I'm not clear. I see us being faced now with two options. A, option one, we deny the A and R endorsement of the plan and require the applicant to submit a definitive plan in accordance with the regulations governing the subdivision of land. Or we endorse the A and R plan, fellow colleagues, because the road is wide, has been paved, trees have been removed, i.e. making it passable. And we endorse the plan in contradiction, in my view, of our obligation under the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. And what that does, in my mind, is it's a select... If we approve it, if we endorse the plan, it's selective. And I think decreases the authority of the planning board. Why is this not a subdivision? Mr. Counsel?
Well, Emmanuel, thanks a lot. Well, let's just start from the beginning. The authority of the planning board extends only as far as the legislature has seen fit to give you authority. So all of your actions are prescribed by the law. Imagine that blank screen up there is the law. The legislature has acted and said, "There it is. That's the law." You can do anything that's inside the boundaries of that screen. Anything that's outside of that isn't in your jurisdiction. So, the question here is whether the legislature has given you the authority to judge whether something meets the approval-not-required standards. The answer to that is yes. And whether the legislature has given you the authority to require subdivision-level examination by the planning board of something that meets those requirements, those A and R requirements. And the answer to that is no. So, to answer your question about whether your review of an A and R plan, should you choose to approve it, would be in contradiction to your obligations to the subdivision control law, the answer to that is no. Because if something meets the A and R standards, it does not fall into the subdivision control law. And quite to the contrary of selling out the subdivision control law, if I can put it colloquially, you would be acting in contradiction to your obligations under the approval-not-required law. So anytime an application comes in front of you, you have to determine what jurisdiction you have over it, what extent of review that jurisdiction gives to you. So, what is it in this case? The applicant has approved for an A and R. What the law says is that your ability to review an A and R is limited to just certain things. For example, what sort of way are we looking at? Is it a public way? In this case, no. So if it's a private way, was the private way in existence prior to the adoption of the sub-control law? And from what I've heard, in this case, the answer is yes. So, for example, you couldn't just go out today and run a bulldozer through the woods and create a new way and come in and ask for favorable treatment on an A and R application on that new bulldozer-plowed pathway because that new bulldozer-plowed pathway didn't exist prior to the subdivision control law? So, here you have a private way. Yes. It was in existence before subdivision control. Anybody disagree with that? No? Okay. The next question is, is there sufficient frontage on that private way, on that way? And what's the answer to that question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, the private way in existence before subdivision control hurdle is cleared. The frontage hurdle is cleared. That leaves us with the question of access. Is there access to this way? And by access, I don't mean illusory access, you know, just a pencil mark on a plan. Is there real access? What's the answer to that?
There is.
Those are the three things that you're required to examine.
And we're ignoring the third requirement of sufficient width... The construction of the sufficient width and suitable grades and adequate construction.
In what respect are you ignoring that?
Well, we don't know how...again, I don't mean to be... I need to understand how I can execute my obligations here, and this is an incredibly important case. I mean no ill will to Mr. Dascalazi. God bless, good luck with your project. I just don't feel that I'm sufficiently well-informed. And as I read the statute or the authority that's written on our behalf in the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, part of what happened takes place under subdivision control. A road was...a road which was impassable, which by the way...
If I may just interrupt...
I don't like debating with you either.
No. And part of what I'm doing is I tend to use the Socratic method rather than just try to say...
That's okay, I'm Greek.
There it is.
We're Greeks.
And as a brother Greek, why not? The factor is access. In what way is this lot inaccessible?
It is accessible. But it was made accessible...my question, was it not... The Socratic method. Was it not made accessible by virtue of not following the subdivision control regulations? And I use double negatives like you guys do.
No question it was cleared, paved. I walked upon it myself, as you know. We walked on it together. For purposes of the A and R, the clearance of the road, the paving of it, is incidental. The road could be...well, hypothetically, a way could be approved as being unpaved if emergency vehicles could travel on it. So the paving or lack of paving is an incidental fact. The fact to be reviewed is whether the way grants access. There's a nice case, Ball versus Planning Board of Leverett. Very pretty town, a lot of small ways out there. Town next to Amherst, out in the western part of the state. The appeals court wrote...wrote out what it is you have to look at. "We must determine whether the way is merely deficient, i.e. could be better but manageable, or whether it fails to provide acceptable physical access to the goals of 81M," i.e. access is illusory. So using the appeals court's words, is access illusory? It was prior to this clearing and construction.
I'm sorry, I don't know what illusory means.
Imaginary. A figment. A fiction. Well, not that I want to...well, so prior to the paving, vehicles couldn't pass on it. It was a driveway to a single-family...one of the homes down. I'm not sure.
Well, for the record, I believe we introduced a document at the first hearing, at the hearing on the 9th, that showed that prior to the paving of Old Stagecoach Road, there is in fact a record maintained by the town of Wareham that shows police vehicles and at least EMT vehicles going down this road. So we would contest that access was illusory.
Yeah. I imagine what you're trying to say is you would contest that it is not illusory.
No, that it was illusory prior to the road being paved, which is what Mr. Barrett is just...has just stated.
It's interesting. They had a call last weekend and they couldn't find it. You know, you're not doing him any favors because what I was leading towards was that when it was unpaved, access may have been real, not illusory.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. We've provided documentation that I believe shows that access was real.
She misspoke, okay.
We heard you.
We know...we know what you said, it just didn't come out right. Okay. So, you have evidence in front of you that vehicles could get to these one or two houses. Is it one or two? Three?
Well, two, all the way in.
At least two houses, possibly three, prior to the paving. Now, this is purely hypothetical because what you have in front of you right now is paved, is it not? Okay. So, if it were unpaved, would you consider it illusory access if emergency vehicles could get to the two, possibly three, houses that were off of it?
It depends, and this is a matter of opinion. And with all due respect, I saw it differently. We walked the road before it was paved. And I believe a large emergency vehicle would be hard-pressed to turn some of those curves because of the trees and the narrowness of the road. But that's water over the dam now. But I do not share the view that it was illusory. In fact, for me, it was illusory, yes.
So, perhaps to restate what you just said, if it were in front of you right now, on an unpaved basis, as it was, you might have been inclined to treat it as illusory, although as it is in front of you today, it's paved.
Correct.
May I ask a question? If it's a private way, how is ownership of the way determined in respect to upgrades?
Well, there's an interesting question. You'd want to know who owned the way. And, as you know probably better than I do, sometimes private ways are treated as a separate parcel. I'm guessing that's not the case here. I'm guessing that what you have is a private way, that there are notations on deeds, perhaps even easements by prescription where people have been traveling over it, in which case the parties that had frontaged along the edge of the way, possibly under the derelict fee statute, would have ownership to the middle of the way, depending on what the deeds themselves said. Perhaps the persons who own the underlying fee would have certain obligations. And then, on the question of maintenance, there is a mechanism whereby all the beneficiaries of the way can get together and gather and essentially hold their own private meeting to assess costs for the maintenance of the way.
Would the applicant have taken liberties by improving and paving that road without the input of the folks that have frontage on it?
I don't know...as a matter of fact, I don't know what process the applicant followed to get this road paved.
The reason that I ask the question is while we were there speaking with the Florindos, Mrs. Florindo made statement that their property moved off the front of their yard under the road to the other side of the road. So in fact, a paved surface has been placed technically on their property. And she led...she didn't lead me to believe that there was any permissions or even discussions concerning the process with them. It just...it happened.
Well, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I certainly think that...is Mrs. Florindo here?
I don't see her.
No, okay, so we're...
I'm her neighbor. I've talked to her about it.
Yes, well, so have I. But that's why I would rather have had her here, so that she could speak for herself. It would have been better if Mrs. Florindo were here because I do recall her saying that she hadn't been asked to... About whether this way would be paved. I did ask her if she had an objection on that basis. And I think you will recall that she stated that it was her position that people could pass and repass over her property as part of the rights in the private way.
Right. Oh, yeah, I'm not questioning the ability to pass to get to the other lots. I was just questioning, you know, where the permissions came to make improvements upon somebody else's property.
And I think that we have to separate out the legal issues here... And, and I think that we have to separate out the legal issues here. Unless the Florindo, if the Florindo's are aggrieved, and I didn't get that sense, I mean, they weren't happy that this just happened without a by-your-leave. And you correct me if I'm misstating what we both heard. They weren't pleased about it happening without a by-your-leave or a request to do it. They didn't necessarily seem aggrieved from the point of view of running off to court to get an injunction.
No, I didn't get the sense they were going to run off and create legal issues, but they certainly weren't pleased with the fact that it took place without any input from their side.
That's true, and I agree with you. That's what I heard as well. So those facts as put into this analysis probably fall out in this way. The Florindo's may, or may not, have a private right of action against the applicant for overburdening the easement, for coming in and paving without permission. Whether they choose to exercise those rights doesn't matter in terms of what's before you tonight. What's before you tonight is simply whether the way, as it's been presented to you, provides access. Now, if the Florindo's had gone to court and got an injunction that prevents the passage of vehicles on it, that would be a different matter, you know, and I'd be saying, well, I really don't see how you could approve it. Okay, if the Florindo's had got that kind of injunction, I think we'd be dealing with a different set of facts here that would go to whether there was access. If a court said, hey, nobody's going across, well, that sounds like no access to me. We don't have those facts.
And that's not a potential problem for the applicant down the road, once these homes are constructed and sold?
Oh, it, it may be a real problem for the applicant, but for purposes of the planning board, it's not within the factors that are within your purview in reviewing the application.
So I guess my, my last question would be if we found favorably on the A and R, and the Florindo's go to court and start the process, and as a result, access to these lots becomes now inaccessible, there's nothing that can come back to the board from the homeowners that these have purchased these homes and said, you know, you should have seen this, you should have stopped this, and now we have, we have no way to get to our homes because of us.
I'd have to say that'd be a pretty weak claim. If you choose to approve this application, the only thing that you're saying is that it has frontage, it was a private way in existence before subdivision control, and that there were enough facts to show that there was access. That's all you're saying. You're not saying these lots will be great. You're not saying that they'll be buildable because approval of an A and R, that doesn't mean anything's buildable. You're not saying that they comply with zoning. You're not warranting this property at all. And if there are legal impediments to the end user using this roadway, you've pointed them out, but that's going to be on the applicant to cure. Thank you.
If I may, Emmanuel, did we answer your question? I don't think that you've gotten the answer that you wanted.
Well, it's not a matter of getting the answer I want, it's trying to understand.
May I rephrase, that you didn't get an answer to your question, period?
Not clear, and if I may for the last time, and I won't take any more of your time, the situation shall not be deemed to constitute a subdivision if there are those items that you mentioned, or a way in existence, and a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective, was, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, it didn't. Suitable grades, not. An adequate construction, unknown. Okay. Now this has been corrected, quote unquote. By what process? And all, and perhaps we shouldn't take their time, perhaps you need to come to the board and help us understand our obligations here. Because I do not understand how the process of correcting the insufficient width, the unsuitable grades, and the unknown construction, how do they come to be corrected? By what, by what process, and does the planning board have any involvement in it? As I understand it, and I will shut up, it's, it's hard to do. As I understand it, it's what is given to us under the authority of the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. Thank you for listening, and I'm, I still need an answer sometime.
Okay, well, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to answer your question. The subdivision rules do not apply to this. The process that you wish to understand by which these improvements were made certainly is a matter of some interest, and were I to be a prospective purchaser of one of these lots, I certainly would be interested in, and by the way, I'm not, but just as a matter of caution, I would be interested in that. But that isn't what is in front of this board right now. And while your curiosity about those factors is commendable and understandable, you must think of it in these terms. Were this board to turn down the A and R, and you can do as you please, I won't make a recommendation, and I certainly don't have a vote, you must ask yourself if in a year or two, when it's the day of trial, and one or both council have made a motion for review of the property, of the roadway, and we, the judge, the clerk, the jury, if there is a jury, yourselves as witnesses, the applicant, when we're all standing out in the middle of the roadway, and the judge asks, sir, is there frontage? Your answer will be, yes. Was this a private way in existence when the subdivision control rules were adopted? Your answer is yes. Can I have a fire truck come down this lane as we stand on it here today? Well, Chief Rowley says yes. That's all the judge is going to ask. And so, how do you think that trial will end?
It will have been very expensive for both parties.
I work on retainer, so, no.
So if I may, Mr. Bowen, I just want to be very clear that I understand this. The point that you're making is, is that there is no question about, do subdivision laws apply or not apply? The point, the question in front of us is, is this A and R application, does it meet the requirements, and that is all we are to vote on or decide upon? Does this A and R meet the requirements of an A and R according to our bylaws?
According to state law, and you're right, that is the only question.
And normally, the protection of that would be, whether it met the zoning, would be whether we got a building permit or not. Has already received a building permit.
No, 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 no. Has nothing to do with zoning.
But what we're doing, we're not saying it's buildable or not.
Oh, you, Mr. Chairman, forgive me, you are quite right.
Determination would be made by the building department after this process, before.
Mr. Chairman, you're 100% right. You're not saying it's zoned properly, you're not saying it's buildable, you're not saying it can connect to sewer, you're not saying it'll get a septic tank, you're not saying it has water. All you're saying is it meets those three characteristics that I've described, and nothing more.
Currently, this road is not town-maintained, not town-accepted. It's maintained by agreement with two of the abutists. Now you're adding two more, possibly four more abutists. If there's any attempt for that road to be accepted down the line, that cost will be, they'll bear the burden of that. Nothing to do with the A and R.
No, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to add on to your point, because this was something that, a concern that the Florindo's had raised when we spoke with them, you know, what happens in the future? You know, what if somebody wants to make it a public way? The board knows the process very well, I know this, and perhaps this is just more for anyone who happens to be listening in. Persons who wish to make it into a public way would have to petition the Board of Selectmen. They would open a layout hearing, they would send a referral to the planning board for its recommendation. If the recommendation from the planning board came back as favorable than the Board of Selectmen, in their discretion, would decide whether to lay out the roadway. And then if they decided to lay it out, then it would go to town meeting, where the voters of the town would decide whether the town wanted to take it on. And I don't wish to anticipate something that you might do in future, but I've certainly seen the planning board take a keen interest in the quality of the road before it's been willing to accept something, recommend something to be accepted as a public way. I mean, Emmanuel, at that point, certainly the quality of the construction is absolutely fair game and the recommendation you'd make to the selectmen. It's just, that's not what we have today. And I'm going on, I guess, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you'll be glad to see the backside of me when I leave. Look, I know this has been a controversial thing. I've certainly heard a lot about it. People's expectations of what is expected from this board could be unrealistic. You know, the factors that you're reviewing are very limited. If there are other issues that people have about this proposal, then they should address those concerns to the boards, or state officials, or whomever that have jurisdiction to review those particular concerns. And it would be unfair for this board to be freighted with the expectation of having to deal with things that might be the subject of a certain state agency review or other departments.
Does this establish the layout of Old Stagecoach Road?
No.
Because an aerial photo I saw, not ten years old, shows it coming to the corner of the Florindo property and then heading south. So we're going to see A and Rs next week for another Old Stagecoach Road?
That sounds illusory.
This was more illusory than that, at least that's identified on a map. Charlie, could you have a?
I have a dilemma. And that is, how do you draw the distinction between a simple road which has been there since time immemorial, having certain conditions of construction connected with it, whereby you could very simply come in and, or you could make the determination by going out there on the ground and seeing the construction? How, how does the board going forward make the distinction between that situation and this one, which has seen these improvements only occur in the last two months? It would seem to me that the, one of the opening sections of our own subdivision rules and regulations say that you can't do road construction without approval under the subdivision control law. It's also one of the things in the definition of what a subdivision is not when it calls for the planning board to make a determination as to the adequacy of construction. When you go out there and anybody sees that road, you're going to be seeing it from the surface. And I'm not trying to cast any dispersions on the applicant or the construction methods because quite frankly, I don't know what they are. I wasn't out there when the work was done. I was out there once when the road was completely paved, the way that you see it today, but not during the course of construction. So where does the line get drawn between those instances where you clearly have a road that doesn't fit the third of the three options that a planning board has, and a situation where one just goes in and arbitrarily makes improvements to his own standards, and then comes in and asks the planning board to endorse that plan, or an A and R?
Well, you've, it's an interesting question, but the problem with the question is that you've posed a false assumption and then built a question upon the false assumption.
Please, please enlighten me on the false assumption, because I need to understand this.
Yeah, I know. The false assumption is that the subdivision rules and regulations apply to this application. They don't. It's a private way that was in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control.
I do not make the assumption that it did not exist. What I'm saying is that without any input from the planning board or making an attempt to ask for waivers for construction, construction was done on a road, and then after the fact, the A and R application is applied for. How does anyone, whether it's this applicant or any applicant, get to be able to do that under the terms of the subdivision control law or the A and R statute?
Stop. How does anyone get to do this under the subdivision control law?
Or the A and R statute, because that, that presumes that you can just go out and do it on your own, doesn't it?
Yes.
And if you can do that on your own, why are we all here?
Because there's an application in front of the Board of Appeals, which, pardon me, Board of Appeals, the planning board, which asks for the planning board's determination as to whether there is sufficient frontage on a private way that was existence before the subdivision control law was in existence, on a private way that has real, rather than illusory, access. That is why we are here.
What in, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what in your opinion might the planning board do to improve its subdivision rules and regulations so that this doesn't happen again?
This is not a subdivision. You cannot apply subdivision rules and regulations to something that isn't a subdivision. Legally, this is not a subdivision.
Charlie, if I may, your question.
I've stated my, my case, and I'll rest there, it's not fair for me to take up any more of your time.
No, but I think your point, your point is valid, but I don't think it applies right now. I think that when this, when this is done, when this is done, then I will ask you to repeat that question, and we can talk about it, but in terms of.
I hear what you're saying.
In terms of addressing the applicant's application for an A and R, this isn't the right time.
Any other questions, concerns?
The point of order, with Mark not here tonight, George, typically I don't vote, but I think that on this issue, being here for all of the hearings, I think I may, I may, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
I don't believe so. This is not a hearing. This is not a hearing, but I don't think you act on A and Rs.
It's not a special, not a special permit either, and I think that's the only case where. It's not a special, not a special permit either, and I think that's the only case where...
Do you want to be clear?
I can't.
It's like you're out of luck, Bud.
Yeah.
I had a question, why no two on the plan references was there regarding Beaver Path? Is that somewhere on this plan or?
It's just an abutting property. Which goes towards property line determinations. So we've got a fair amount of survey in the area. It's an abutting piece of land. We built upon the survey from that to establish these property lines. We've used some of Mr. Rowley's plans going back earlier on this property.
Any other question?
Well, it's, it's a shame that I was under the assumption that we had a certain shot at the way the Planning Board ran. This is totally circumventing the whole system. So we're coming from the back door and we have to accept it? I don't agree with you, counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You, you should not take this as, and I certainly hope that you don't mean it in a disparaging way. I am reciting to you the law of the Commonwealth as it has been handed down to you by the legislature and by the courts of the Commonwealth. I don't have to like it. I didn't write it. I didn't design it. It doesn't matter whether I agree with it or whether I don't. But this is the law. The law allows what the law allows. And it's not your job to like it. It's your job to follow it.
Comments, motions, observations?
Do we need to make a motion to call for a vote?
We do. I'm not doing it.
Can I make a motion then that we have a vote on this applicant's application for an A and R?
You can't make a motion.
Uh, that's an interesting point. He's not voting on the project, he's voting on an action, so.
Oh, you've told me before I can make motions and I have.
I'm not ready to vote. I've received a lot of information that is contrary to my instinct and my understanding of the law, and I'm not a lawyer. But I don't know what the consequence of my statement is. I'm just not ready to vote.
Unfortunately, some sort of decision will have to be made tonight and filed tomorrow, so.
So here we go, looking what it done to our head, right?
Well, you'd have a very short time period for A and R's.
I was, I was under the impression that we, that the decision, that our time ran out tonight to decide on this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you, if the board chooses to do nothing, the application is constructively endorsed. So.
Well, we can make a motion to deny. And we'll go back to square one?
No, you'll go to court.
Maybe that's where we have to go. Because I don't agree with you, counsel, I really don't. Because this whole thing from day one is a backdoor, it's a backdoor system. So the Commonwealth allows backdoor. What are we here for?
I'll be sure to call you as my first witness.
So you need a motion, Judge?
Michael, on the other hand, with great regret, we have our counsel advising us and that's...
There's always two lawyers standing as a judge. And you don't have to agree with them every time. I don't agree with them, this time I really don't.
You guys gotta do me a favor by using the mic.
Thanks, Bob.
I don't agree, Bob. Is that better?
You gotta turn him on too, Mike.
Sorry about that.
Oh, my goodness.
Is that better? Paying no attention to the voice behind the curtain.
Look back up. Back up, George. I, I did make a motion and you had question as to whether I was allowed to or not.
I would ask for help from counsel on that one.
Well, why don't I withdraw it? I'll withdraw that motion and we'll let you four take care of it, Tom.
Is there, instead of waiting two years and making the lawyers rich?
I work on a retainer. So making a lawyer rich, excuse me.
Would it be at all possible to shortcut the process by submitting a definitive plan to go for subdivision quickly with waivers?
No, it's our position that we're not under the subdivision rules and regulations. And we have, I believe I indicated that we already have a prospective buyer for the home that's been constructed. And my client would end up, you know, sustaining damages by any further delay. So when we were here on the ninth, you specifically asked if we would agree to give you additional time because you wanted to get the input of the fire chief, which you now have received, and you also wanted to go and you wanted to inspect the road, which you've indicated that you have. So we would respectfully request that you take a vote on our proposal tonight.
If we take a vote and it is negative, it doesn't help your client and it doesn't help the board, doesn't help the town. We appreciate having had the time to become familiar, more familiar with the situation. And still, there remains this question, which with all due respect to Mr. Bowen, he's done a beautiful job of explaining it, but and it's with all due respect, I'm not disagreeing academically with you, it's just, I feel that the process for improving this road should have been followed in a different manner. And so if we deny the application tonight, we're gonna be in court for two years. And that doesn't help you either. And I, I hope you understand that our, we, we have the same commitment here to doing the right thing as you do when you sit at the zoning Board of Appeals. We all, we're all doing the same thing. Could we not find an intermediate method to get your goals accomplished and to get the board to perform in accordance with what it believes to be its obligation?
Respectfully, I would indicate to you that your responsibility as a board member is not to follow your feelings, but to follow the law. And I think your counsel has made it very clear what the law is. He cited the same case that I cited to all of you on September ninth. We believe, under the law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that my client is entitled to endorsement on this A and R plan. And that's what we're asking for.
And I ask you again, sorry for the time. By what mechanism that is within the purview of the Planning Board, which the authority grants us, by what mechanism has the insufficient width, insufficient grades and unknown construction been addressed? By what mechanism? Subject to the, under the board's purview? I mean, there's the conflict, you see. We, part of our authority, no person shall make a subdivision unless and until a definitive plan of such subdivision has been submitted to and approved by the wearing Planning Board.
This is not, this is not a subdivision, respectfully.
But the process, the process of, of improving the road...
This is not a subdivision.
I guess my, my question to counsel would be, what I've read on the subject was, as long as the improvements were made prior to the application, they would have been considered? I don't know if that's accurate or not. Sure you've read a lot more of that than I have.
With your permission, I don't know that that's accurate either. You're gonna be, you're judging this as it sits on the ground right now. And look, I, what I'm about to say, I say it with great respect for Emmanuel and for Mike. Believe me, it, it, it's never a comfortable position to be delivering harsh truths. And I hope you understand that and that my delivering harsh truths, I don't do it with disrespect for those of you who disagree with what I'm telling you. But I must also tell you this, that it is your job to follow the law as it is given to you. It is not your job to legislate and create law that does not exist.
If I may.
And so you must ask yourselves, are you acting as legislators here, which is not your job? Or are you carrying out the law as it is written and given to you?
If I may, one last comment. So you've explained to us quite clearly, you know, access, frontage. If there's no document or no agreement with the Florindo stating that they could improve the property which belongs to them, isn't he in fact gaining access through suspect terms? I mean, that's, that's part of this whole agreement is he has access, that this is what we're debating tonight. Yes, he has access. But does he have access under 100% legal terms? Or has he taken liberties with someone else's property and improved upon that property in order to, to accommodate this question of access?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman. You know, in fairness, that's probably a question that the applicant should be answering to the board, but I will just say this. When I and you and Emmanuel spoke to Mrs. Florindo about their right to pass and repass, her answer was?
True. I'm not, not questioning the right to pass.
They may do so.
I'm questioning the right to improve the road in order to gain an A and R approval.
And for the record, I don't know whether you spoke to Mr. Florindo or not, but...
We did.
My client, Mr. Florindo gave my client permission to do that and requested in exchange that my client pave his driveway, which is what... And also mulch the yard, apparently.
Well, I think we've discussed this enough. I would ask for a motion to endorse the Form A, A and R for lot 1035A and 1035B.
I think if that motion's gonna be made, it's gonna have to come from you. I, I will vote to support it. I'm gonna hold my nose doing it, but I will vote to support it, but I am not gonna be on record as making the motion to approve it.
I will make the motion to endorse the A and R for lot 1035A and 1035B, map 90.
Second.
I don't think anybody likes the feel of this. I think there was other access provided by the previous owner that would have been better suited. But this is what we have before us. And it does meet the area and frontage.
With great regret, I vote to endorse it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think it stinks. And I feel bad for the windows.
We get the air conditioners back up.
Yeah, really, it's getting a little warm in here. Can I turn that back on?
I'd like to have a discussion with you sometime about why it didn't take it out of that realm and throw it into a subdivision by the virtue of the construction. Seems to me that we did away with that.
Sometimes.
Yeah. How do we change that? That's not right. This won't be the last one. So the law, the law lets it get away with it. This, this, at, at this juncture, there's, there's no set of standards that you could apply to anything. Doesn't seem, the way...
Bullshit from the beginning. In other words, you, you put up a master plan, you know it's not gonna work like this. Do what you want to do and come back and fix it later. That's a backdoor deal. I mean, if the law, if the law says it's allowed, there's time to change a lot of it. You know, like I said, there ain't no way in hell.
There are...
They're gonna be before us another month to cut up the other two lots.
There are some suggested bylaw changes you can make to keep this stuff happening.
It goes a lot of time and too much everybody's doing what we want to do, that's the problem.
I get this all the time. Next, we have...
You're off my Christmas list.
Oh, you don't wanna stay?
You don't have to agree all the time. Thanks for coming in, Mitch. We appreciate it.
We could have made it a lot worse for you. We could've made it a lot worse for you. Lot 454A and B for Longwood Ave, care of J.C. Engineering. Put your mic back on so we don't get yelled at.
Hey, Bob, can you hear me?
Bob, did you hear me swearing?
Very good. What was yours?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Brian Wallace with J.C. Engineering. In front of you is an A and R plan which depicts two existing dwellings, one built in 1940, one built in 1910 per the Wareham Assessor's Card, built on one lot.
Do you have a copy of the cards?
Copy of the card? Yes, I do. Believe I may have submitted, but I also So both of these dwellings were existing prior to the subdivision control law. This plan divides lot, currently divided in lot 544A, 544B. We're proposing reconfiguration of those two lots to provide one single dwelling on each, and that is essentially what this plan is.
So this is the old lot line?
Yeah, I don't know what that's like.
This is the new one?
Yeah, yeah.
The house is already exist?
Yeah, the four houses exist.
So are they just providing access?
Two, four.
So
Their access is still here. Longwood Ave.
You know, where's this brick wall really? Does it lead to what?
Since Attorney Bowen left, I'll just go over the exemption that applies to this particular case.
He's, I'm sure he's in the back of it.
This is called an 81L exemption. It's the division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing when the subdivision control law went into effect in the city or town in which the land lies, into separate lots on each of which one such a building shall remain standing, shall not constitute a subdivision.
Now, the rear lot line was changed at some point?
The lot dividing 544A and 544B?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was all one, one deed that described both lots, so I'm unsure of how long that's been established for. It was unclear looking through the, the records, but, yeah.
So this is the fire district? Yes, these two.
So at some point, the owner of lot 544A and B purchased the property in the back, in the rear?
To the best of my knowledge, yeah. They, they bought the property as one.
So they just moved that down to give them basically their, so
Under the old configuration, this would, that patio and all their property.
Yeah. Or maybe they're forty months since.
You don't find Longwood Ave to be sufficient with the gray.
That's okay, they can fix it anyway, so for later on.
How can you go against it?
Twelve hundred square feet in one and 2,082 in the other. The buildings. The lots, oh, the lot, sorry.
The lot's 2,000 square feet.
The line card shows, been there that long?
Yeah, 1940.
You here to make a motion?
Entertainer motion to endorse Form A for William Michael Butler.
For, for you, for Longwood Ave, answer, approval not required, plan.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This one will fold. This one will fold. He's a spex.
You can hold on to it, I don't need it.
It's okay.
I'm trying. Yeah, he's home resting. Yeah, Mary brought him home Saturday. Feed him ice cream and turn on Barrett Jackson.
Next is approval not required plan for an A and R for map 105, lot 16, 17, 110, map 106, lot 2, Charlotte Furnace Road, AD Makepeace, care of GAF Engineering. Appearances where you are.
Thank you, sir. Approved.
Why can't all be this easy?
Thank you.
I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering here on behalf of AD Makepeace. We have a less complicated, the least complicated Form A plan that you've seen tonight.
That might be a kiss of death.
Well, but it, it's less complicated. But AD Makepeace is just seeking to divide some of the property that they own. They, they had two lots, I guess it was lot numbers 16 and 17. They're shown as a dotted line there adjacent to the, to the easement.
The electrical piece, which is over here, these two lots were shown on the previous plan. And this triangular shape right here, that was a piece of property, I think they bought that auction from the town, it was a tax-taking parcel. So when they acquired this land, it gave them enough to, enough additional frontage to create five lots on Charlotte Furnace Road, which is a 50-foot wide public way in the town. So that's what we've done, we've just created five lots, each of which has the minimum 80 feet of frontage and, well, exceeds a minimum lot area and frontage for that matter. There's one small notation that I'd just like to point out here, is that when AD purchased the property, I think they had a discussion with the person that owns this lot here, lot 17, and there was a discussion about being a 50-foot tree buffer adjacent to that lot for the duration of time that the people that live in that home are there. So there's a note on the plan accordingly, it's a little bit more, Richard Serke had us add the general, or the restriction note that's in the center of the sheet. But as far as the Form A goes, they all meet the frontage and area requirement.
So their 50-foot squats can come all the way to Charlotte Furnace Road, Bill? I notice you've got a, you've got a radius in the, you know, I'm kind of, kind of antsy sometimes when we see different lines on the print, so just, okay.
But this right here?
Yeah. Just the whole hockey park, they're gonna restrict, right?
Correct.
In the remaining land of L2, approximately, it's about 289 acres. That's the remaining land of L2.
Was that 50-foot restriction granted to that particular owner, or does it run with the property?
It does not run with the property solely for the benefit of the owner of that lot while they're, while they're living.
Bill, what's gonna happen to, to remain the lands, what, on lot 2 now?
L2?
Yep.
Yep. What's gonna happen there? I believe it's just to remain as, I'm sure they're gonna break up or do, conduct other activities within that lot over time. As of now, there is no plans for that lot, but I think that there's, if you look at L2 previously behind, say where Master Millworks is and further down Charlotte Furnace Road, there's some solar sites that were, that were built on that. I don't know whether that land was conveyed out or leased to the solar company or what the situation was there, but there are no plans at the present time for the remaining portion of L2.
These are also within the B-did?
Yes.
Certainly.
I move to endorse the plan labeled
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Motion made by Emmanuel, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got some papers? Next we have is a discussion on Factory Five Racing regarding a modification of the special permit.
You again.
You again, Bill Madden from GAF here on behalf of Factory Five.
Thank you.
I think, if you might, if you recall, back when the project was run through site plan review, there were, there were some conditions on the, conditions of approval, and the most significant one was that we had to work with the neighbor with respect to some of the material that he had stockpiled on, on the property that Factory, Factory Five was acquiring. We, we went through a few, well, I didn't run through a few discussions with them, but the, the project manager in Factory Five went through some discussions with them, and needless to say, there was a little bit of a difficult time with some discussions, and we had to make, well, it was suggested that we make a modification to the drainage to offset some of the, some of the discussion points that the abutter was making, and they weren't really able to come to a perfect agreement with, with what the disposition would be of the stockpiled material that was on the site. You might recall?
I don't know if you recall or not, but The changes really, that we, that we show on the plan are really just, just a change, but there was several other minor changes that came about, like relocating some landscaping, changing a small here and there. So we just made a complete plan set change and submitted them to the planning board for review. But you might recall, this area in the back, there was a lot of stockpiles, and they were all over the ground, the material on the backside of the property. One point in time, we had shown a stone wall on the, on the backside there, and we took that up as a condition of approval, number four, I think it was number four, that required us to meet with the, with the owner of that material to see what we could do to pull it back and redesign, recreate the site the way we had originally proposed. Well, he pulled his material back, and now it's, it is on the property line, but it's probably the boulders and the rocks that are piled up there, they probably told him what the proposed building is gonna be. So it's really not a great situation to be digging another drainage basin next to that, so what we proposed and is still in, but I'll get to that in a minute. But this, this area here on sheet number three just shows what the existing toko is on site after all the material was moved. So what we did find is there was a, there was some, there was a drainage manhole that was covered with, with those rocks. There was a couple of leaching pits that were covered with the lots, and they were predominantly for a parking lot that was associated with the bakery that was there. So since we're tearing down the bakery and we're providing a new drainage system, there really isn't a need to maintain that system of where the catch basin existed offsite, and it's unknown as to what area that we're draining, what is actually draining to that basin. We left one of the, we're calling to leave one of the leaching pits there, just abandoned the piping, so that any, then any water does get to the basin. I don't think anything gets there, because that adjacent property is on a, on a yard that has a lot of vehicles, debris, and things of that nature. There's no direct grading that goes to that catch basin. But in any event, we got no business dealing with the catch basin, so it was to remain. The leaching pit was on the property line, so we just decided to leave that there, tap the overflow pipe out of it, and let it, just leave it to remain as it is for drainage, doesn't interfere with the project. It doesn't interfere with the project. That's just a grading plan that doesn't really, doesn't really change with what we're doing. Here is the, the beat of the, of the project change. Originally, the basin had a small finger-like projection that stuck. It projected out on the bank side of the parking lot. All of our drainage went to the, that stormwater material that was located basically at the deep end of the, the ladder and this drainage basin. So, what we did is we, we showed that being filled in with three 24-inch diameter corrugated plastic pipes in, in a stone bed. That was to compensate for the volume of the open basin that we, that we were filling in. So, I provided Ken with some drainage calculations. It shows what the volume of the basin, that portion of the basin was that we're filling in and what we're providing for mitigation for that. So, essentially, we'll have a flat area now adjacent to this parking vehicle delivery area, adjacent to that. And it's opposed to having, I think we had a 3:1 slope design there. We show it as being, I think the drawings are 2:1, I'm sorry, 1:1. But it's, we're going to stone it, use trap rock or stone for pipe pins on that, on that section of where there's a lot of rock behind us. You know, we didn't think that aesthetically it would be too much of a problem. We know it will hold the bank, it will hold the bank. And on our, on our side of the property, it looks like it's about 60 feet or so of stone and a little bit more over here on another one of those piles, or those debris piles. So, that's really the focus of the change that we have on the, on the plan. There's, we talked about the, talked about the stone fill on note number five. And then our landscaping plan required us to move a little, the landscaping around in the basin. We didn't eliminate it, we just shifted it a little bit further down. So, there really isn't going to be anything on that, on that stone slope. So, we did just shift that material down in that, in that drainage basin. Now, he has the, up here in the top half of the sheet indicates in the ground infiltration that we're proposing, how it's to be constructed, how it's to go in place, what have you. We show what we did to the infiltration basin, just with the elevations of the 100 year, the storm events changed by fractions of, fractions of a foot, you know, not very much at all. But we decided to put that on the plan, at least updated in that regard. So, really, it's, it's filling in that open piece of basin with, with a pipe and an infiltration bed that's below grade. And that was really the only thing that we could come up with to, to solve the problem with the, with the neighbor. So, what we did is we sent a, a letter to the planning board and we provided the information because condition number four of their special permit gives the planning board the authority to make what might be considered minor changes. We're thinking that these could be consider, considered minor changes and could be approved without the need of a public hearing. So, that's the whole focus, is to come before you, just to discuss what we're doing here and wait, have you weigh in on whether or not you agree that they're minor or whether you may consider these significant.
Can I have you at a chance to review these, or?
I'm seeing them for the first time, George. I think the only question I would have would be on the drainage calculations. I was just looking through this set to see if there was a, a plan that tells me where the various subcatchments are. I'm trying to relate that diagram to the subcatchments, and I'm not sure where they are.
Oh, I think that the subcatchments would be the, you know, I'd have to provide you with the original drainage calc because none of the catchment areas changed.
So, it's the same designation?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, from my perspective, I think just a quick overview of the drainage calc's is all I need to do. There hasn't been enough difference in the overall design of it to warrant going into detail on the plan.
So, you, you probably feel the way we feel, consider it a minor change?
I do.
Does the final resting place of this construction debris, does that cause water to run under this property?
No.
Bill, I got a question. On the left hand, lower left-hand corner, you're going to waste a red maple tree? If the canopy's over them stones, it might create a problem.
Oh, you mean in the, in the corner, the one that we're going to plant, the one that's planted, that we're going to be planting right here?
Not that one, the other one.
This one over here?
Yeah. That canopy looks like it's over the line. I think you might have a problem there.
Well, we may, but we're not, we're hoping that, we're hoping that we won't.
George.
No, it's just a real difficult situation and...
I know that. I said, I'm saying that candidly because I, I know the, the abbotor, and he definitely can be a difficult individual.
Yeah.
Unreasonable.
No, and I mean, it's a, it's a good project and, you know, we're not making any noise about what's going on over there or whatever, but, you know, I'm sure that when certain inspections get made and, you know, other things might come about.
Shall he have to wear a flak jacket?
Just an observation, Mike, would it make sense to take that maple and put it out front?
Yeah, I, I would, I would.
Rather than have it back there?
Yeah, because it's only going to get choked out back there. Why waste a good tree?
If, if that's your wish, if we reviewed the plan and that's a, that's a comment that you make, we're happy to comply.
You've got that sort of a, some sort of a circle there that I'm assuming is going to be grassed in or something. See where that sort of a loop of the curbing is in there, Bill?
Here?
Yeah. Somewhere in there? Could that be incorporated in there somehow?
Yeah. I don't see why not, and it looks like that may be one of the few areas that's a little sparse in the landscape. You know, there is a couple of utilities in there, but I don't think there's anything that would, a tree would... So, sure, we could, we could put it right over here.
Just a suggestion, that's all.
Yeah.
They tend to kill whatever's underneath them.
Well, the thing, the thing is, that rock pile's so high with all that overgrowth, that tree's never going to survive in the back. Plus, red maple trees are pretty. I like them.
So, I think we look for a, a motion to approve as a minor modification. Subject to the review?
To review, Charlie. Yep. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's made by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Emmanuel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll, I'll have the review done so that you can have it as a part of your next meeting. I don't know what Ken's schedule is for doing the document up, you'll have to sign, but I'll be prepared to give you a favorable report, I suspect.
That work for you, Bill?
That will work just fine.
We are a reasonable board.
I know. I've been, I've been coming by here, stopping by occasionally for a number of years. I, I don't have any issues with, with anything.
I got the small...
That was going on, Hindley's favorite comment, remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Good night.
And if you need any more from me, I'll just, whatever you need, just give us a call. Yeah, we'll, we'll do whatever's necessary. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Hey, Bill.
Do you want your, Bill? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Bay Point Drive, endorsement of Phase 2 subdivision plan with covenant.
I think you may have the draft of the covenant in your folders.
Is this what we were waiting for regarding?
What we were waiting for and we just received it.
Can I ask a question, please?
I'm sorry.
Can, can you explain to me what, what this is? I, I'm sorry. I'm only learning so fast.
This, this is a document that says the improvements will be made in accordance with the subdivision plans for any transfer of the property.
As in them selling?
As in them selling.
Okay.
Me Too Movement hasn't gotten a hold of this yet.
No.
Know all men and women.
They already know. Oh, is my mic on? Wait a minute. By height, this, it doesn't help. References for nameplate. Has you identified? Hmm? Time of year?
That's a lot of double time.
I thought we were going to effect long by releasing lots individually.
Do you release lots individually?
Yeah. Thought that was, we were told couldn't do that.
Not a good idea at all. You may do it, but it's not a good idea.
Must have a mortgage on, on the property.
Well, that's, it says you can do that, right?
Yeah.
I thought that that was...
Want to strike it?
Well, I think it would save us a lot. I don't, I didn't know that that stood up. I thought once you released the covenant, you either replaced it with...
A performance bond or a surety.
A different form of surety. Or you, you couldn't hold smaller lots. Lesser lots, I guess.
Let's, let's cross that out. Let's cross that out then.
You had exposure to that, Charlie?
What's that, George?
In the past, we'd released individual lots. But somewhere along the line, I was told that that's not a good idea, that if you replace, rather than release single lots, you replace the covenant with a different form of surety.
You cannot, you cannot release, make a partial release, let me say it that way, of some lots and not release others without some other form of surety? Because that's not one of the four criteria that's allowed under the rules of regulations. You can do it as a combination, but you can't simply say that, well, we've withheld five out of the 10 lots, so we've still got security on those first five? You've got nothing on those first five. So, if you're going to, if you want a partial release of those lots and the construction has not been finished, then you get security on those, on those lots.
I get you. Says inviting this storm on.
Is this typical, this document?
This covenant, yes, it is.
I'm, I'm assuming so. I haven't seen it.
There's, there's upon performance of this covenant with respect to any lot. So, the action, so if there's enough surety there, you can release.
Right.
Yeah, if, if they want lot releases, once this covenant's put on record, then they've got to supply the cost estimate for the construction, just like they did in Phase 1.
There are blanks in terms of dates and other documents. We don't, we don't sign blanks, do we?
No, we don't. We fill those in.
So, what are we doing tonight, just reading this?
Just okaying it for future endorsement, because we'll have to have the plans themselves as well.
Sorry.
The, the plan of land, of the subdivision of land has to be part of, is, is a partner with this covenant. And you, and you endorse those subdivision?
Counsel reviewed this?
No, not yet.
Give it to Williams here.
I'm sure he'll get it soon.
Does this make any sense to you?
Only if it was the original. I have to go back to the book page reference, title references to see what's in it.
We didn't finish the approval of Phase 2, did we?
What's that?
You didn't complete the approval of Phase 2?
Yeah, you did.
The soil plan was all done?
Yeah.
Could have been in 2018. That's the date they quoted.
Hmm. No, no.
Just recently.
No, they were here this past spring. No, they were here this past spring. Okay, so that's taken out of the rules and regulations, Form F.
Yes.
Were there any special conditions mentioned in there, George?
Not conditions as to construction and so forth. This is... It references our approval, which we have.
Okay, and the certificate of approval and the conditions that are attached to that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
These, in here, it's more of the execution of the covenant than anything else.
Yep.
Just review. If there's anything glaring that is unnecessary to include. But I'll have the council review it. Confirm that it's the same. I'll have council, town council, review it. And get the plans for endorsement along with the covenant.
What can you tell us about Kahoon Drive reconfiguration?
Speaking of Bay Point, Tim Pei came to my office with a suggestion that the, we allow him to put a turnaround at the end of the public section, the developed public section of Kahoon Drive. And link Bay Point Drive Extension, call the existing Kahoon Drive section within his his golf course subdivision. Bay Point Drive, call it Bay Point Drive, and have the Bay Point Drive Extension and Bay Point Drive be one continuous road with Kahoon Drive separated.
What's it going to do with everybody in the condos up there? So they'll be on Bay Point Drive?
They'd be on Bay Point Drive instead of Bay Point Drive Extension.
And he would then connect to the other end of it, like originally was proposed?
Correct. With emergency access in between.
So...
So this section from onset out all the way up to the end of the...
There's supposed to be a cul-de-sac up there now, by the condos.
Where's he going to put the turnaround at?
Wasn't there supposed to be a breakaway gate there years ago?
I don't think so. It was supposed to come all the way around the farm. And so you can't go up here and down here?
Yeah, you couldn't go up Kahoon Drive from onset and connect unless you're an emergency vehicle.
How do you control that?
Gates. Same thing done at the other end of the farm.
That's a town way though.
Right, and need town meeting action.
Yep.
Why does he want to do this? He should have done this when all the construction trucks are coming in.
We do everything after the fact in this town.
Would have been fewer complaints.
Yeah.
He'd like to do it to...
If he knows.
No, I think I've stood with him to turn the reason over.
What would you do for the end of Kahoon Road then?
Turn around and emergency access gate.
That was supposed to have been done originally, Charlie, wasn't it? Way, way, three developers back? I don't think so. No.
I think it would be wise to ask them to come in front of us and explain their motivation. Why they're doing this. I mean, we don't want to just approve things because they asked for it, but let's find out what they're trying to accomplish and if it lines up with what we're trying to accomplish. Probably would make the people that live on Kahoon Road right off onset pretty happy, I would think.
It would, and it would probably make Bay Point Club happy not to have another access, accessway onto their property. But I don't think the necessarily, the Bay Point Drive Extension people living in those condos may agree that since they have...
Shortcut, shortcut in route.
Right. And generally, I don't necessarily like to see access points reduced to property. I think land should be more porous as possible in terms of access and accessibility.
Ken, why didn't they submit a plan to illustrate this?
Because they're just searching out for opinion at this point.
It's hard to make a, it's hard to express an opinion without seeing it. This is, an oral description of a visual thing is hard to... They should have submitted a plan.
They will if they think it's going to go somewhere.
Pardon?
I don't see the benefit, honestly, to this. You know, you're going to may resolve some of the complaints on Kahoon. Generate, which is a town way, and you're going to generate complaints on Bay Point Extension because while this construction's going on, they'll let, maybe can't use Kahoon Road.
You know, here we go again, something after the fact.
Being a town way, you know, here we go again, we're going to dead-end it? Basically, that's what we're going to do.
Essentially, it's a dead end now. There's a turnaround within the the golf course at the end of Kahoon.
Yeah. But that would end up as an actual dead end then? He's going to gate it.
Yeah, there'd be a real dead end.
Where would the, on whose land would the circle be built?
That would be on Bay Point Club land.
So the circle would be built on Bay Point land. How would you make the connection into the condo project then? That's why Manuel suggested a plan to see how that would work. I mean, I'm trying to visualize it myself. And if you stop at the tree line where that power line is and assume that Kahoon Road's going to stop there and Bay Point's going to incorporate all of the development that is the Bay Point condos, you're going to be putting the cul-de-sac on somebody else. So I think he's got a point. You've got to see the plan before you can even discuss it intelligently, it seems.
I guess the question is whether or not you want to have a discussion on it or suggest the start again.
Suggest what?
Let's start over again.
Is Phase One complete?
No.
No.
It's not complete.
Half?
All the buildings, the buildings are up. Binder course is on the road. Sidewalks were built 90%. I haven't been in there in some time to see what extent they've done the landscaping. They've done nothing with the construction of Bay Point Drive from onset avenue in to the clubhouse. So that's still as it always was. That's the last I've seen it. I think it's been over a month, I think, since I've been asked to go in there and look at it.
So the surge of heavy equipment should be over at this point for that phase?
I'd say the majority of it is because I think all the buildings are up. Pretty sure they are.
For Phase One, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Phase Two, all the, it's going to be coming in southern access point, right? Well, construction on Bay Point Drive may cause people to use Kahoon Road. We should see a plan.
Yeah, they should come in with a plan and describe what they want to do.
And why.
And you'll entertain that. And you'll entertain it and as an option.
We'll listen to it, sure.
Doesn't have to be fancy at this point, just a...
Sure.
Sketch, so we know what he's gunning by. Ken or George, for a road change, to do something like this, that's a significant change. Is that a town meeting action?
Yes.
Yes, it requires town meeting action for a change in a public road.
Good.
And it would take a modification of the special permit for Phase One.
That too.
That too. In addition to a subdivision layout, maybe. Depending on what they show.
It's a long road.
You will convey the invite?
I'll convey the invite to Tim Pei.
I believe the initial, not the first, but the second stage when they did the larger condos, I thought the plan was to bring that right around and come back to Kahoon Drive. Thought I saw a plan somewhere for that. With the same emergency gate and all that, and I don't think it was ever constructed. Do you recall any of that?
I wasn't involved with any of that.
It goes all the way around to a cul-de-sac. And there's no emergency. You're talking about the road that went around the, around the condos?
Yeah.
Yeah, it dead-ends.
But you see that little crescent that comes down there? I think there was supposed to be a...
There's supposed to have been an emergency, a breakaway gate there. It was never built.
It's never been constructed. Yeah, it's like a bike path or a walk path. If I remember right. See, I want them to put the T for this hole back. This is stupid. This is way too short.
Yeah, but you lose a lot of balls in the water as well, too.
Well, this is still way too short from here.
I'll extend the invitation to Tim Pei.
So George, or Ken, you're going to tell them, come on in for a talk about, you want some plans?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Be right on that. Master Plan Discussion.
So, last time we talked about this, I took the action to come back with a proposal about how this board would review the master plan and how we would reach out to talk about the master plan to the other boards and the Congress implementation. So this is, this is pretty short. On the master plan approval, we talked about the planning board scheduling off-cycle review meetings to go through it and the update process at an open meeting. And I'm looking at the 30th of September, which is next Monday, and then October 7th and 21st.
Seven o'clock is a meeting.
We're going to meet on the 7th and 21st because our regular meeting nights are either holiday or town meetings.
Okay. So what, let's look at a calendar then. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
There you go. Hoop the page.
So September 30th is an open day. Can you say, we're moving, we're moving our planning board meetings to the 7th and 21st?
Correct. Because the 14th is Columbus Day and the 28th is town meeting.
Okay. So that means, that pushes us into, if we stay on Mondays, that pushes us into November. Assuming we stick to 7:00 PM. I think we can do this in two meetings, from two two-hour meetings at the most. I threw three up just for buffer. Is, are we locked to Mondays?
I don't know when the room's available otherwise, or when A room is available.
I can, I can get a room.
Doesn't have to be this one, but...
But we're going to do it under open meeting with agendas and postings and...
Correct.
Right. So if we did the 7th of September, no, that's not right.
We got to jump in the time machine.
Does that work for everyone, September 30th, week from tonight?
Yes.
Yep.
So we're good for September 30th? Is there, is...
That's next week.
I'll just start. Our Tuesday nights are no good for me. Thursday nights and Friday nights are. Wednesday nights, I know, Ken, your zoning board appeals typically, every other. So what if I, what if we said, let's, we did it on Thursday, the 3rd, October 3rd? Does that work for people?
Let me see, a meeting...
That works for me.
I'll make it work.
Going on the 7th and the 21st. Okay, why don't we do this? Let's do those two, seven to nine, hard to stop at nine. And see how far we get through it. All right? And so to that end...
30th of the 3rd?
The 30th, September 30th and October 3rd.
Thank you.
Emmanuel, you already have, you printed out a copy of the...
Yes.
So I'm not going to give you one.
I have it.
So this is the hard copy of the master plan, the summary.
I have one.
You have one? Ken, do you have one?
Whoever wrote Somerville by the Sea should have been thrown out of the meeting.
I'm sorry?
It's a bad misrepresentation here. You don't show all the black bag of cars in the back of the town.
That's too far out.
Okay.
Okay. 30th and October 3rd are on, planning board meeting on the 7th and 21st. All right, so...
Just wanted to remind you, sorry, the 21st of October, I will not be here. Not that it matters, but...
So the next step, what I'd like to do is share the current master plan online with all the, all other We're Hand Agency chairpeople. And share with them our review schedule. And include in the agendas that we post for these meetings an opportunity for them to provide input if they so wish.
If there are many people present, if there are many people present to participate, I'm concerned that we may not get much done.
I'm concerned that we may not get much done, would, how about, would you consider that the five of us, six of us, seven of us, Charlie included, meet first to go over this plan, or this, and then submit it to, open it up for discussion and comments? Because if we, if there were a dozen, twenty people to participate in the discussion, I, I I think we, I'm concerned we may not get very far. Whereas if the five of us, and Ken and Charlie, okay, I would ask you to consider that?
I, I'm open to any and all suggestions. I understand your point, first.
Yeah, I think at least one meeting, so we all get comfortable with the direction we wanna share.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good plan.
Okay, so let's do this
There will be a public meeting, it'd be posted, so people wanna come in and listen, they can, but
Sure, yeah.
So, so that's, so the approach I'm hearing is, is that we hold two sessions with no outside input on the agenda. We do it by ourselves, we get through those two, let's assume that we get through the whole document at that point, which I think we will. And then we Oh, jeez. I wanna share, I just, I wanna share with you one slide. I don't wanna redo every, all the work that Ken's already done. I'm gonna get ahead of myself here a little bit. This is the history of the current office, but it was passed on. It was created by Serped. Sorry. Yeah, it was, it was created by Serped. It was referenced, seven other documents that were already in place. There was a workshop, public workshop held in June of seventeen. There was social media and online surveys done in seventeen, there was a master plan open house on nine fourteen seventeen. Ken, I don't know your dates, Ken, but you shared this with all the agency heads already. I don't know the format of that, that's what I heard you tell me, no, yes? Yeah, yeah. And then the final version was published. And the point I'm trying to make is, is I don't wanna have to go through all that again. I don't think it was necessary. But let's, if we go through two meetings just ourselves, do we have a, do we then put it on the agenda for a normal meeting and have a public hearing and invite anybody and their brother to come talk to it?
I, I think at that point, we could have an open workshop and invite other board members in to show them what we've got to, the point we're at, and have they additional, let them critique it.
Have a separate meeting just with that one agenda item for their input?
Yeah. As well as public.
That work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
That works for me. And we'll schedule that when we're ready. On the Congress, what I'd like to propose to kick this off is that the proposal that I made to this board already, that I take that and schedule it with, I came up with this list of five, and I'm totally open to adjustments here.
Scratch the Board of Appeals, they do what they please.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Now tell me, I'm learning. And I, I mean, Conservation Committee, I struggled, do I include them or not? But I know that they have a lot of say in a lot of land use decisions that are made in this town, so I included them.
I, I would question what the Finance Committee's involved in this.
I have a lot of questions about that in general. I, I hear ya. I see them up on the stage at town meeting, and I, and I therefore include them. I want their endorsement, I've talked to a couple of them about it, I need them to get on board and if we do, if we do go to town meeting
What is the goal of the Congress, what's their mission again?
I'm sorry, what?
What is the mission of the Congress?
The, the mission of the Congress is to get the boards to work together. With, with the master plan as, as the root agenda, and driving activities out of that.
So it's not going to be meeting with prospective developers, or things of that nature?
The Congress?
No.
No, I would expect the Congress to hear people like the Redevelopment Authority come and report on activities that they're, that they have undertaken and are executing against, against given goals and strategies of the master plan. You know, in alignment with Land Use Strategy Number Seven, this is what we're doing over on Littleton Drive for affordable housing. And that's, but that, that initiative is, is either the Redevelopment Authorities, or the Planning Boards, or somebodies, but it's not, it's not an agenda, or an own, the Congress doesn't own it.
I would just say, on the example you gave, Littleton Drive, I think you'd wanna have some public safety input. 'Cause that's a large-scale development.
See, I would turn to the Redevelopment Authority, if they're driving, which they are now, to, to do that, and I would expect you as a, as a Chair, Chairman of the Planning Board attending the Congress to ask that question of them during, during an update that they gave. Are you, have you included them in your discussions and your planning? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I could see where Finance Committee would wanna know some different types, I don't know if they'd wanna be included in all discussions. Like, on that particular instance, you're talking, that's an affordable project, I assume.
It's, that's one of the ways it's, it's, we're looking at it.
And their, their aspect of the mitigation, the, the impact on the community.
Sure.
I know that's usually divvied up between the Board of Appeals and the Selectmen, but I think FinCom should be knowledgeable about it.
So I heard, I saw several heads go like this when, when you suggested we take the ZBA off of this. Because the next bullet is, is that I would do a general presentation, a general audience presentation, if you will, of the same material in an open forum for everybody else.
I was just pulling your leg about ZBA.
Are you sure?
You wanna include them, that's
If you're gonna include them, why not include the Planning Board?
Include who?
You haven't included the Planning Board.
They've already done the presentation for us.
Yeah, I considered them, uh, done.
Okay.
And then finally, do it again at a, at a public workshop, a public hearing, or, or at some point, when we've gotten good input and feedback from all our agencies on what they thought it should be, that we could take it to the public for their input.
Well, all, everything you've shown is volunteer boards and commissions. Is there a point in time when the department heads are going to be dragged into this? People that have to execute these goals?
I'll be honest with you, I, my head wasn't there. I consider the department heads to be executors of plans and programs and projects that the different volunteer agencies and, and Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee and all these, these agencies that we have come up with to execute against. Charlie, you had commented to me once about including fire and, and police.
I think all of those people who have direct contact with the public on a daily basis probably know more about the problems and the things that they have to solve than any of the rest of us.
And at some point in time, whatever the Congress puts forth has to be presented to the people that have to execute.
Oh, of course.
So, we don't wanna miss that handoff.
Okay, I mean, I hear you, and, and I, and I've given it a lot of thought, and I, and I don't know if I went to the fire department and said, hey, I want you to go execute, you know, Land Use Goal Number Seventeen for me, that they, they'd tell me that that would be something that they'd say is not in their purview.
But if you said, okay, go back to Littleton Drive, people move with a plan and say, this is what we're hoping to accomplish, what do you think? They can critique the plan and give you back a report?
I think that, in my, yeah, yeah, that has to happen. In my mind, though, that's a level of execution down from what the Congress is doing.
Okay.
But you, I'm totally on board with you. And maybe that's the level of detail Congress ends up, that we have to get to, I don't know yet. But I'm right on board. So, what I'd like to walk out of here tonight was, with, is this board's agreement that I will go to the ZB, to the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Conservation Commission, and Redevelopment Authority with the Congress proposal, and get their feedback, and then schedule a general one for everybody else, and I'll do the invites and share it with them, and I'll drive it. Does that sound reasonable?
After, after our meeting?
The, um, our meeting's on master plan. This is on Congress.
What, not, not questioning your intent, I don't understand, what, what would you be presenting to them?
The idea that, that once a quarter, a representative from these agencies are gonna get together and align themselves around the different aspects of the master plan, which is, by the way, presently in final review, if you will. And at that point, we could initiate. That's all I have for tonight. Good. I have forty-five slo, I, I've, I've got I've, I've, I'm ready to go on going through, on almost a line-by-line basis of, of the master plan that's in front of you. On the different goals, the categories, goals, and strategies that are outlined in there. And there's a lot of them. The thing, the reason I think we can do it quickly is because a lot of them are really common sense, no-brainer type of things, yes, we wanna do those. There's not that much, not that many contentious ones. And even when there are, I'm not sure that we wanna change them anyway, because, just because I don't agree with it, I guarantee you there's two people out there that do. So, I think I mentioned to Charlie that there's fifty-two different strategies outlined in the master plan, and if we could get, get five of them going, it'd be, it'd be huge. So, I'm not, I'm not one to really worry a whole lot about getting all fifty-two of them exactly right, if you will, so. All right, I have my marching orders. We good?
Yep.
Thanks, Richard, I, I, speaking for myself, I'm not really tuned in too much tonight after this experience. I'm not very fond of participating in any of this. Tonight I fell into a pigpen, pigsty. And the stench that I sense about myself after the vote I took makes me question what we're doing. So I apologize, I'm not tuned in to what you're saying. I have to go home and take a shower, try to get the dirt off me. And I think part of a without the ability to overcome such events in the future, you know, we're paper pushers, and to have our attorney, who I respect, be so negative as to the way some of us see what our role is, makes me question it, so I need to sleep on this side. So thank you, Richard, and I hope to be in a better mood next time you need. Gotta take a shower.
Yeah, I don't think anyone was happy about that, I think a lot of it was presented to be expeditious rather than
And, you know, the problem with, the problem that I'm feeling, my friends, is that I went against my principles, based on what, based on the encouragement of our attorney, I betrayed my own principles, and that really bothers me. So I've gotta think it through. Thanks for listening. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You wanna endorse the minutes for us? I thought we, did we do that?
No, we pushed them aside.
Oh, we pushed them aside. Thanks for keeping me up.
Entertain a motion to endorse the minutes for September ninth.
Second. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Now, now Emmanuel, you're on duty, second.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second, second.
Michael wanted that.